Exhibit A2, which is sheet C4.1 of the plans that were submitted, shows that the applicant is going to mill and overlay a large portion of the park. This site's in an existing shopping center, it's only a portion of that shopping center, but the applicant is going to mill and overlay a large part of that parking lot to clean up, get rid of the burger baths and things like that that's present there.
And these were issues that were raised in the reports of the board's engineer, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is what we propose, but if there's an approval, it would be subject to the review and approval, obviously, of your board engineer to make sure that he's happy. And the same actually goes with landscaping, that we depicted the landscaping on the site, but the final landscaping would be subject to the review and approval. Mr. Higgins?
That's fine, you're welcome.
Okay. Can we just go over in a little bit of detail the signage plan?
Sure. Right now, there are three existing signs on the building. There is two, what they call McDonald's Wordmark signs, one on the, what they call the non-drive-through side, which is the side that faces West Park Avenue. Then, on the front of the building, there is McDonald's Wordmark again, and then another sign says the words "Play Place" on it. What we are proposing on the building, we're proposing four building signs now. McDonald's Wordmark on the front of the building, in the front elevation, as well as an arch on what's called the brand wall portion of the building. On the non-drive-through side, we are proposing another arch on the brand wall, side on the brand wall on that elevation of the building. And on the drive-through elevation, we are proposing just another McDonald's Wordmark.
Can I ask for clarification? You also have the welcome sign.
Oh, correct.
It's basically five-star.
Okay, correct, yes. If that meets the sign by ordinance, there is a small welcome sign over the canopy over the entrance door.
So, how many additional signs are being proposed versus what was previously approved by this board?
Three signs were originally approved, what's out there right now. So, with the welcome sign, we are proposing five total signs.
And just through the board's identification, when I looked at it, quite frankly, I think the signage that's being proposed, first of all, in terms of volume, it's less, but it's also, in terms of attractiveness, I think it's much more attractive, and it looks much better on the building than the existing sign, especially since that big, heavily-colored "Play Place" sign that they were using. They required, they're permitted up to three signs because they have three street frontages, and they're proposing five.
And my last question is, there is, my understanding is, there is not any increase in seating by virtue of the proposal tonight?
There is not.
So, the parking is still compliant with previous approvals?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions for our engineer.
At this point... Before I open up to the public for questions of your witness, or do any of the board members have questions of this particular witness?
I have a quick question. In your officials' report, there is a notice that the upgrades to ADA compliance?
Yes, we are upgrading the exterior parking to meet ADA guidelines, as well as the sidewalks to the building, so that there's an accessible path of travel to the building. Right now, those sidewalks do not meet ADA guidelines, so those are being modified.
Any access to the building with the doors, will that be compliant?
Correct. As well as the interior bathrooms, those are going to be remodeled to be ADA compliant as well.
Anyone else?
Just through the board's identification, there is also a technical variance for freestanding signs. There's currently on the site four freestanding signs, the two major pylon signs under 35, which are not being changed, from what I've seen with the application. One identifies the other used on the site, the other is the McDonald's sign. Then you have the menu board and the pre-menu board, which were previously approved, they're changing them, who turns to making them smaller. And then they have two, what I think are really more like directional or informational signs on the drive-through. One's called a welcome point gateway sign, and the other is a drive-through sign. They aren't there now, so there would be a total of six freestanding signs, but again, I think it's an improvement over what currently exists on the site. The menu board and the pre-menu board, or whatever they call that, are going to be LED now, which can be easier, more easily changed. The existing ones, I think, are just paper.
That's correct, yes. They have that insert that they change inside.
Does anyone else have a question of the witness?
Was there any consideration given to any shrubs or bushes to kind of soften the look at all?
We have, sorry. We have made some consideration for that, but ultimately, we're, as previously stated, we're going to take direction for Mr. Higgins and make sure that he's happy with the ultimate design.
They're eliminating the "Play Place" portion of the building, which is a fairly significant portion of the building. And if they just have on the plan saying landscaped area, and my comment was, they have to have a landscaped plan, and that's a variance, so they're going to work with me to come up with something in that area that's much more attractive landscaping.
Anyone else on the board have a question of the witness?
I would just mention that my five-year-old is going to be devastated, so I don't know if you'd call it an upgrade, but...
I can tell you, when I did my site visit, I brought my six-year-old and my three-year-old, and got me a lot, I understand.
Well, necessarily, this is going to be similar to the one that they need to have.
Yes.
It's very nice, the way they're changing, the love of it.
Okay, I'd like to open up this portion of the meeting to the members of the general public that might have a question regarding this particular witness's testimony. If so, you can step up and talk to the microphone and give your address.
Peter Youngkun, Six Ten Deal Rowler, my question is about the LED lighting. Do we have any LED lighting signs today on the property?
Where?
Today on the property, is there any LED lighting today?
I don't know, but the LED lighting is just going to be, it's going to be on the menu board, it's going to look like a television set.
How big is that going to be?
Anything to answer any questions?
Sure, so we're proposing to replace the existing menu board, is approximately 42 square feet. We are proposing to replace that with a new digital menu board that is LED backlit.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, could you mark that?
Sure, yes, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mark this A3.
Yes. And can you just identify for the record?
This is an exhibit showing the proposed signage that's on, that's going to be on the site. So, as I was saying, the existing menu boards, it's a 42-square-foot fluorescent backlit menu board, we are proposing a 20-square-foot digital menu board that is LED backlit, as well as, there's an existing, what they call, pre-browse board on the site that advertises, it could be a special item, or even a regular item, that's about 11 square feet. We are proposing that with a 10-square-feet, replacing it with a 10-square-foot pre-browse board that is also digital with LED backlighting.
Can you show us where on the plan we'd see those LED lights?
Where, can we, you've already marked this?
This is exhibit A2. So, the, they're basically where the existing menu board equipment are, so the new digital menu board is here, and the pre-browse board is right here behind the building.
So, they're at the entrance to the McDonald's, they're not out in the parking area at all?
They're behind the building and the drive-through where the existing drive-through signage is. So, between the McDonald's, I guess, and the, there's a Rite Aid and a Part of the City retail store here.
Do we know, does the township have any kind of guidelines on LED lighting? And does this conform with those guidelines?
Yes.
And are there any other lighting, all the signs are illuminated that are being changed?
Correct. The existing wall signs are illuminated, and the new wall signs are, with the exception of the welcome, that small welcome sign, that is not illuminated, but the wordmark and the arches are LED backlit as well.
So, we're not increasing any light intensity on the property?
No, we are not increasing light intensity. It's probably a wash, because the LED menu boards are probably a little bit less light than the existing fluorescent ones, but in essence, we're not changing any whole amount of light, about there.
Hello.
I have a question on the landscaping. Is that going to be something that's maintained throughout the years? Because for those of us that are aware of the Burger King on the corner of Sunset and 35, there's two dead trees, and I just want to make sure that we don't run into that situation down the line. So, if we can have something that's pleasing to the eye, maybe maintained would be great.
The applicant is going to comply with the recommendations that the board's planner, Mr. Higgins, gives us in terms of species, size, and it's a condition of the resolution that that landscaping exists, so that requires a maintenance of the landscaping.
And how long is that required to be maintained for?
That is what the board is approving, so that needs to be in the way that Mr. Higgins is recommending it, basically in perpetuity. You can't, you can't allow it to wither away over time.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the general public that have questions for this particular witness? If not, then I'm going to close that section of the public session. But now, I would like to open it up to general questions, unless you have another witness.
Mr. Chairman, I have a planner just to do with the variance.
Oh, you do?
Yes, thank you.
Sir, would you bring your right hand, be honest, to tell the truth, the whole truth, the whole deal?
I did.
If you hold me in the record, please.
Yes, I'm Michael J. Pesolano, that's P-E-S-S-O-L-A-N-O, Licensed Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey, practicing professional planning since license in 1984. Continually, licensed in expanding, recently appearing before boards generally, not before this one yet, but in Aberdeen, Titten Falls, Long Branch, Southland, Alpenshire. Accepted as a, I think, a claim of consent, if you please, sir.
We'll accept your credentials.
We'll accept your credentials. Okay, Michael, you've heard the request for variance, which the applicant has, you've also heard Mr. Higgins' comments with regard to that. If you could just briefly lead us through the positive and negative criteria that support the grant of the variance?
Yes, very briefly, this application stands on good review terms with this evidence, and we appreciate thoroughness and elucidation of what this application is basically about, not very much innovative moving parts. We have a reduction of signage intensity overall, despite the number increasing, and that's generally consistent with the screen line look of the new McDonald's rollout that's happening across the country. That's important because part of the customer expectation at McDonald's is the consistency in how people are getting through the site, and that's the number of signs, of the freestanding signs, is what that's about. Guiding through the drive-through involves four freestanding signs, so they're all discreetly oriented to that drive-through lanes, are not obtrusive to passing public, only to users of the site who get the direct benefit of those higher number of signs than permitted. The wall signs represent, again, a reduction in total volumes, which Higgins pointed out, and adds to the aesthetic, that is, in my view, definitely an upgrade to their modernization program, a whole new venue for the McDonald's family of restaurants throughout New Jersey, as I witnessed, I'm sure, because the transformation underway. There's a public benefit to that, and that is advancing the municipal land use law, promoting a desirable visual environment. We're taking a fairly outdated look and making it modern and fresh. What does that do? That translates not into just benefits for the owner of the property, but also for the community, because it sends a signal, a very definite signal that new investment is taking place still in this location today, and that keeps the commercial purely vital, bringing up a public benefit, in my view. It's also serving customer fire with wayfinding through the site in a cheaper fashion, and the climate relates to improvements in all designs, and so the design that's proposed before you tonight is upgraded to that system, which McDonald's has certainly built on, systems, and this is no different. Getting customers through the site efficiently makes sense for everybody. As far as a detriment, this is a detriment for application, I believe, because it represents a downsizing, if you will, of one of the issues that's on the table, which is sign. And so, where that takes place, I can think a detriment could be measured, if any, it's certainly, it might be announced to the level of being a substantial detriment. This site continues to be serving the master plan intention of being a commercial property, so public consistency with that, and a certain detriment to those own, for those own important skater, of all of the relief that can be granted pursuant to the C2 analysis, which is a way of analysis for the benefits of the application as a whole, being substantially outweighed of the detriments, since we're light on detriments here, it's all pretty much kind of a, I think you can easily conclude that they'd be set, the C2 standard. Thank you for your question.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to come up and make a comment or question any testimony that was given by this particular witness? No one in the public, then how about some members of the board? Does anybody want to ask this particular witness a question? Okay, then.
I'm sure I can.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just in conclusion, this is an existing site, it was previously approved by the board, this is an upgrade, amongst the upgrades, is making it ADA compliant, a lesser intensity on signage. We believe that the positive and negative criteria are satisfied.
Thank you, and would anybody make a motion for a positive resolution?
I'll move.
I'll move to closer here. Move to closer here.
I'll second.
Mr. Burge?
Yes.
Dr. DePenteno?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Dundy?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Burley?
Yes.
Motion for a positive resolution. I'll make the motion, I'll second. Give me the motion, please.
Is there any particular finding of fact of the compliance with the recommendations of our professionals?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Mr. Burge?
Yes.
Dr. DePenteno?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Rethick?
Yes.
Mr. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
And Chairman Burley?
Yes.
We're going to take a 10-minute break before we proceed with the next case. Ladies and gentlemen, we have the next case, which is Deal 35 Land LLC, Block 33 Lot, 19.01, 1603 State Highway 35, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C-7. Jennifer Crimco, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, as Mr. Burge said, Jennifer Crimco, Frances Alpenarren, here on behalf of the applicant. What I intended to do was give a short overview, play a short animated film of what the proposed development is going to look like, and move a bunch of items into evidence. I will tell you that every piece of evidence we have, we have a flash drive to give to Ron and to Amy, so you have it on record, and I also have handouts of almost everything that we're going to present. But I do understand that procedurally, before I get started, there is an objection as to jurisdiction, so I'm going to turn it over to Sandy and have him discuss the objection as to notice and jurisdiction, and then I can proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Crimco. Several minutes ago, this nice gentleman out here indicated that he has an objection based on notice. So, sir, if you would like to come up and advise what your objection is, and I, Amy, is this a microphone on?
Sandy, I would just ask, since I'm assuming he's not an attorney, if he is an attorney, then fine, if he's not an attorney, I would just ask that he be sworn in before he addressed the board.
Yeah, that would be proper. Sir, with you, can you extend your motion to the record?
Scott Sharp, 1403 Sunset Avenue, La Masse.
And if you raise your right hand, please, would you, in time to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so you got?
I do.
And I understood that you...
First, as far as my background, you've asked about background.
No, the background is only for expert witnesses being put forward by the application.
I was talking to Mr. Seck.
And I'm entitled to place, I'm entitled to place objection.
Don't interrupt me, don't interrupt me, though.
All I was trying to say was, all I was trying to say was that if you state your objection for the record, then we'll consider it, and we'll give you an opportunity to respond and rule.
Okay. My concern as a citizen, I'm not an attorney, I am an engineer, and from, and my concern is, as I attempted to work with Mr. Kirk over the past several weeks, with regard to submission of a complete, the definition of that complete proposal by the developer, my concern came about as a result of my understanding of when would that be, because I was hearing through the Township Council...
I have to place an objection on the record, Mr. Chair. If there's an objection with regard to jurisdiction, and that goes solely to notice, then I'd be happy to hear it, but if he has comments as to the, whether or not the application itself was substantial, that's something he can raise during public comments. The only thing I conceded to at this point was a challenge as to notice, because as you know, it's jurisdictional.
My, my understanding...
Please keep your comments restricted to Ms. Crimco's comments.
My understanding was that the proposal would be submitted on the 15th of the month.
Again, Mr. Chair, that has nothing to do with notice, the notice under the statute, NJSA 4055D-10, speaks to my publication in the newspaper 10 days in advance of the hearing, as well as the mailing to the people within 200 feet, unless there's a specific challenge as to the substance of that notice, or the mailing or the publication, I would ask that we be able to proceed.
Ms. Crimco, with regards to the documents that you are relying on tonight, were they all on file 10 days before today's date?
The short answer, and I was going to go through that when I went through my presentation of the exhibits, any plans or documents or reports that we're intending to rely upon for approval, yes, were on file for 10 days in advance. We have some illustrative exhibits, such as a PowerPoint exhibit, some color elevations, as well as the movie, which obviously were not on file, nor are they required to be under the municipal land use law. There were two revised plans that were submitted, having to do with color elevations. I'm not submitting them into evidence today, I'm submitting them for identification purposes only. With regard to completeness, we were issued a completeness letter. Well, I'm just saying, we were issued a completeness letter, so, again, whether or not there's an objection as to the sufficiency of one of the exhibits I put forth, I guess we could address that as I move in the exhibits. But again, the only question that I understood was as to jurisdiction. The only jurisdictional question that's in front of the board is whether or not the notice was adequate. I submitted the notice, I complied with the statute, unless there's something specific that he's asking the board to rule, and I'd ask that we be continued to move forward.
Do we have a list of what was submitted?
Yes, that was the, that was all submitted, it was on file for the board 10 days in advance.
The board, so I guess the public is out of this.
Again, this is not a...
I didn't ask you, don't, don't talk down to me.
This is, this is not a notice issue, and for the record, I'm not speaking down to the person who's raising the objection. What I'm trying to do is create a clear and concise record in case there's an appeal. There are certain procedural requirements that have to be followed.
I understand.
So, I apologize if you felt I was talking down to, I was not. I'm advocating on behalf of my client, which is what I'm hired to do.
Fair.
Very good.
I've made my point, the board should know what that point is, and I would urge you to think carefully as we go forward, and we'll see how it plays out.
Thank you. So, just to be clear, this board does have jurisdiction, because there is no question about the sufficiency of the notice based on the 10-day rule under the MLUL, either in terms of notice to the public via publication, or the notice to adjacent property owners. It also appears, although it's a subsidiary argument, that the documents that are going to be relied upon at tonight's hearing were on file 10 days in advance, and I'm sure Ms. Crimco will clarify that as we go through. And just for procedure, Ms. Crimco, I would suggest that we can identify documents, but I wouldn't suggest that you attempt to mark them into evidence until at least referred to by a witness, okay?
Okay, well, what I would like to do is, and I prepared a list, and it's in front of you, and for the benefit of the public, and for the ease of going through the presentation, because several of the witnesses will rely on several of the documents, I'd like to go through the list.
May I say something additional with regard to the notice issue, just for the record?
Ma'am, do you have a separate objection based on jurisdiction?
Yes, specifically notice, yes.
All right, then, we're at the jurisdictional point, and would you, Ms. Crimco, are you requiring this person to be sworn?
My name is Monica Mazurczek, I live in West Long Branch, New Jersey. Could you spell your last name? M-A-Z-U-R, C like Charlie, Z like zebra, Y-K. If I could have her sworn, unless you're an attorney. Sure, I am an attorney, but I'll swear, and I swear that I will tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
As an attorney, you're automatically sworn, so we don't have to go through...
Thank you. It's my understanding that the issue with regard to notice pertains to the fact that between, of the 10-day period, one of those days was a legal holiday, and the very purpose of notice is, of publications, et cetera, is so that the public will have a chance to review. I can address that. Yes. Under the municipal land use law, it's provided that the notice be published a minimum of 10 days in advance of the hearing. It's 10 regular days, not business days, that includes holidays and weekends. As an attorney, you know, there are statutes that require business days. For example, a zoning officer has 10 business days with which to respond to a zoning application, or else it's automatically deemed approved. So, there is a distinction in the municipal land use law when it is a business day or a regular day. The statute as to notice is 10 regular days, so as long as the notices were postmarked at least 10 regular days in advance, and the publication was at least 10 regular days in advance, our state mandated notice has been satisfied. So, insofar as there may have been less than 10, for the record, I'm sure Scott would be, I would be objecting, but insofar as they may have been complete, no objection. Thank you. Thank you. So, if I may, going back, I handed out an exhibit list, what I'd like to go through...
Oh, my God.
About timing, the notice, oh, God.
Wait, wait, do you have a jurisdictional objection?
I do.
All right, so...
Yes, and, well, can you want to explain jurisdiction?
Very simply, do you have a challenge that the notice was not sent out 10 days in advance, or that the substance of the notice didn't adequately describe the application as required by the statute? Those are the only two things you can object to as to notice. You can certainly object to everything else with the application, but as far as jurisdiction, that's what it's limited to.
Well, it's, how do we get the public to know what's going on?
I'm sorry, she, she, wait, Jen, Jen, she, she's sworn in.
You're saying it's in a newspaper?
Okay, again, the municipal land use law, the municipal land use law is a state statute that outlines compliance with notice for jurisdiction.
So, what is...
The compliance with notice is publication of one of the two newspapers of general circulation of municipality that's advertised at the beginning of the year by the planning board, the zoning board, and the governing body. The Esberry Park Press is one such newspaper. We published in the Esberry Park Press, that was submitted as part of our affidavit of publication. All of the mailings that were sent out to the certified, to the owners within the 200 feet, all of the certified mailing receipts, as well as the green cards that we received back, were submitted, so...
Where does the cutoff for 200 feet come in? Because we have many...
The cutoff, the cutoff, you asked a question, the cutoff for 200 feet. I submit a request to the tax assessor, I request that any property... I submit a request to the tax assessor, I request that any property within 200 feet of our subject property be included in the list of notice. The municipal land use law goes one step further and says that I'm entitled to rely on that. I will tell you that the ordinance requires that we connect into the library building, into the library property. So, in an abundance of caution, I expanded my list to not only be 200 feet around our subject property, but in addition, 200 feet around the library property as well. So-
No, because we never get anything, we've just been so vocal, so many people in this room.
If you have a complaint at-
What did you put my-
No, no, no.
Well, about timing, about notice. We have retained an attorney.
All right. I-
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want her sworn in?
Of course I do.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Would you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, all beguiled?
I do.
And just for the record, please, we know who you are, but for the record-
Jackie Wenzel, 610 Deal Road. For the record, my formal name is Jacqueline Wenzel-Junkhunst at 610 Deal Road. We have retained an attorney who was on a much, I was told, she had a much-needed vacation, and she's been gone for two weeks.
I have to place an objection, that is not a jurisdictional question. What I believe you're asking the board to do is adjourn the hearing so you could bring your attorney, so you could bring your attorney to the meeting. That's not appropriate for a jurisdictional. If at the end of the hearing, the board is going to vote, if we conclude, that's at the point that you would raise that they not vote so you could bring your attorney. This is not a jurisdictional question for the board.
Okay, we had, I had just, well, I had asked the question to Mr. Brown. Sometimes people do have the attorney here just so they can hear everything that's going on from day one, and may I just ask, I'm just asking, is that something we could do? We could postpone until, because we had very limited time. At the point we learned you were having this meeting, she was already on a much-needed vacation. She's not coming back until midweek this week, and I'm supposed to meet with her on Thursday.
And the answer is no, we're going to continue with our hearing this evening. However, Ocean Township has the benefit of videotaping all of the hearings, and just like I have the pleasure of watching you in front of the council on a biweekly basis, she can certainly watch this hearing.
So, there is, so who has the final word on it? It could be postponed or not.
The applicant has the final word on that. It's the applicant's application that I'm prosecuting, and unless you raise a legal issue as to why the board can't go forward, we're going forward this evening.
Okay. So, any other notices on this case, we should always be looking at the Esberry Park Press, that's where we would find out our news, not from our, because we haven't been, you know, I just feel like our council, our mayor, everyone knows how concerned we've been, it would have been nicer to have more time.
So, the ad hoc comments?
Okay. Thank you, Jackie.
So, with that-
You should proceed with your case.
Thank you. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to go through the list of items that were submitted 10 days in advance, they're on file with the board, you have copies of them, I'm moving them into evidence now.
You're going to mark them for identification until-
You want to wait and move it in all at once? Fine.
At least until there's some testimony about it.
Fine. Well, there may not be testimony on all, there's just going to be reference. For example, the geotechnical report, I'm not bringing a geotech engineer, however, it was referenced as being reviewed in your board engineers and your board planners' review letter, so I feel it's incumbent to move it in.
I'd suggest that we, because of the complexity of this application and being careful about any quasi-rules of evidence, let's just matrix the identification later on with what's been substantiated in terms of some testimony, or at least some cross-reference by-
Okay. I mean, again, everything I'm talking about now is part of the board application and on file. If you want to take notice that it's part of B1, which is the board's packet, as a submission, we can do that, and I don't have to move it in individually.
So, yes, the normal procedure here is to have the board package marked B1, and if you're indicating that B1, which is normally marked for identification at least, includes all these documents, we can certainly do that.
Haven't seen it, but if B1 is a copy, if the board has reviewed as part of the board packet, everything we've submitted to the board in advance of this hearing, then it does. But let's go through it, mark it for ID, we can, we're not going to finish tonight.
Obviously.
A1, preliminary final site plan prepared by Mazur Consulting, dated 6/27/18, last revised 2/14/19, consisting of 62 sheets. A2, land title survey by Mazur Consulting, dated 9/21/16, revised through 6/6/18, consisting of four sheets. A3, final subdivision plot prepared by Mazur, dated 6/27/18, revised through 2/13/19. A4, stormwater management report by Mazur Consulting, revised through 2/14/19. Environmental impact statement prepared by Mazur, dated June 2018. Report of preliminary geotech engineering by Mazur, dated 9/28/16. A7, a supplemental geotech report revised through 11/2018. A8, a tree inventory by Mazur, dated 6/27/18. A9, the project narrative prepared by Mazur, dated 6/27/18. A10, the traffic impact study prepared by Langen, revised through 5/21/18. A11, the traffic review comment response by Langen, dated 2/14/19. A12, signed package prepared by Massa Multimedia Architecture, dated 6/14/18, consisting of six sheets. A13, floor plan and elevations for Chick-fil-A by EH Architects PC, dated 6/6/18, consisting of two sheets. A14, exterior elevations and floor plan for Wawa, prepared by Richard W. Luke Architect, dated 6/4/18, consisting of two sheets. A15, elevations for Turning Point and Retail Buildings by Mass Multimedia Architecture, dated 6/13/18, consisting of three sheets. A16, the architectural plans for Residence Inn, prepared by Base Four, dated 6/7/18, consisting of eight sheets. A17, architectural floor plans and elevations for Zinburger, prepared by Urban Tectonics LLC, dated 7/30/18. A18, the architectural plans for Lennar at Ocean Center Townhomes, prepared by Stanford Associates, dated 6/29/18, consisting of 12 sheets. A19, the canopy plans for Chick-fil-A, undated, consisting of one sheet. A20 is the flood hazard area verification from the DEP, dated 5/2/2018. A21 is the freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation from the DEP, dated 11/22/17. A22, Monmouth County Planning Board, conditional subdivision approval, dated 11/26/18. A23, Monmouth County Planning Board, conditional site plan approval, dated 11/27/19. A24 is the engineering response letter by Mazur Consulting, dated February 15, 2019. All of those items, A1 through A24, have all been submitted to the board office, they have been on file with the board 10 days in advance. What I'd now like to move into evidence are, or move in for identification purposes. And we will provide these in hard copies, I'm going to hand out to the board members, and I do have 25 sets of all, so I will have sets for the public, and we'll give you a flash drive as well. A25 is a video animation depicting the rendered project. A26 is a PowerPoint presentation prepared by Mazur Consulting PC, dated February 25, 2019, consisting of 54 slides. Let me ask you to hand one and have them pass it around. A27, and, Mr. Chair, members of the board, all of these are going to be on the PowerPoint and on the slot, and up on the slides on the projector, so the reason I'm moving it in in advance is so we can reference it and actually mark it, because you're not going to have a physical copy when it's up on the screen. A27 is a site context exhibit prepared by Mazur Consulting, dated February 25, 2019. And A28 is a landscape exhibit prepared by Mazur Consulting, dated February 25, 2019. A29 is a historic aerial downloaded from historicareals.com of the subject property in 1987. And we have large copies of this, and it'll be up on the screen.
This is A29?
Give me one second to come back. Yes, no, that's A28 was the landscape, yes, A29.
Did you say, what year did you say?
Then, I'm sorry? Oh, I meant 380, I'm sorry.
That's why I mentioned it, yes.
80, I'm sorry.
Just clarify the record.
Okay, now, the, because it's going to be referenced on the PowerPoint, and these were not on 10 days in advance, they were in nine days in advance, so I'm not moving these in as evidence, it's only going to be for identification purposes, and we'll move it in at the next meeting, but because it will be referenced, and the board has copies of this, but I'll hand them out. A30 for ID only is the signed package prepared by Massa Multimedia Architecture, dated 2/15/19, consisting of six sheets. And as you hear through the testimony, the only change on this was the cover sheet, the key sheet that shows the layout. The plans were changed when the layout changed. A31 are the architectural floor plans and elevations for the Turning Point and Retail, prepared by Massa Multimedia, 2/15/19, consisting of 11 sheets. And on this one, the original submission that I previously moved in was for elevations only, we realized that we failed to include the floor plans. So, this is just an updated set to include floor plans. Again, this is for ID only.
And again, for the record, when you say moving in, none of-
Introducing, not moving in. Introducing for reference. And then lastly, I'd like to introduce as A32 for ID only, a color rendered front-right perspective of the Chick-fil-A building, prepared by Stephen Cooper Architect, dated
I'd like to ask our professionals if you're comfortable having the documents which have not been on record for 10 days to be discussed tonight?
As I understand, the land use law allows an applicant to bring supplemental information to a planning board for presentation purposes.
But I asked if you're comfortable-
Well, yeah, I'm absolutely comfortable, I've been looking at this for about nine months now.
I don't think there's anything substantially different in any of these documents, so no problem at all.
And that's what I was here for. Thank you.
Thank you. And just by way of very quick opening, because I think that our movie and our PowerPoint speaks a lot more eloquently than I can. As the board knows, they're intimately familiar with the subject property, it's 32 acres on the corner of Deal Road and Route 35. It was originally part of a 74-acre tract, that was, a portion of which, through an agreement with the town many years ago, was, a portion of which was deeded over to the town, and as part of that agreement, the town was to rezone the property for commercial use and the like. Since that time, there's been numerous rezonings, and the property wasn't developed part and parcel, because the Stop &amp; Shop had an application pending before the board, and prior to the change in the municipal land use law, which prohibited a governing body from changing the zoning out from under an applicant while they were proceeding with an application, a former governing body changed the zoning out from under the applicant, and it was no longer permitted zoning, and even though they had spent hundreds of thousands of dollars moving the historic house and complying with their end of the bargain, the zoning was changed, and as a result, they couldn't go forward with their development. That resulted in ongoing litigation, that's been going on some 13, 14, maybe 15 years at this point. My client is the contract purchaser of the subject property. It's my understanding that the governing body adopted a resolution that if this approval is granted, and my client closes on the property, that Stop &amp; Shop has agreed to dismiss its litigation. That's not a reason for this board to make a decision, but I put that on the record only because there were concerns from the public over the various months and years in front of the governing body, as well as the planning board. Well, how do we know that Stop &amp; Shop isn't going to just keep suing and it's not going to make a difference? That agreement with the borough, with the town council puts that to rest. So, during the process, there were numerous submissions made by my applicant with various other developers with regard to developing the site. And over the years, we submitted numerous iterations of the plan, and each time, the governing body reviewed it and basically said, "It's too dense, it doesn't meet our master plan, we don't want that much either commercial, we don't want that much housing, you're not doing this, you're not doing that." And after many years of going back and forth, we submitted a plan that the governing body was comfortable with as it relates to zoning. And as a result, the governing body adopted a resolution, I think out in ordinance, I believe it was 2303, which rezone this property from C6 to C7. So, under the context of the current zoning, we submit this application to you today. You can tell, and many of you have been seeing me appear before you for almost 20 years now, never with this much material or this much evidence. And the reason that there is this much is it's a large site, it's a complex site, and there's a lot of moving parts. So, when we go through it, you'll be as surprised as I am, the de minimis nature of the variance is being sought, as well as the number of variances being sought. With smaller sites, you just heard, there were numerous variances. As you'll hear, the variances here are not substantive as they relate to the uses, as they relate to setbacks of buildings and the like, we're going to go through all of that. So, what you essentially have before you is a conforming plan that meets with your ordinance that regulates the subject property. So, with all of that, what I'd like to do is ask that we turn to what I moved into evidence as A25.
It's not moved into evidence.
I'm sorry, that I introduced for identification, that's out of habit, I apologize, and you'll correct me every time, I'm going to try and remember. What I introduced, and which the architect, when he comes up, who prepared it, will substantiate so we can move it into evidence, is a video animation, which basically shows a 3D animation of the subject property in the developed form. Presuming my engineer can get it right. Would you like us to move these screens?
Anybody on the board want the tripod moved? Is there any need to reduce the lighting?
I don't know, because I don't know how bright it's going to be, let's see.
Can you take that bank down?
The front bank?
No, the front lights.
Yeah, but, don't stand.
We don't know.
All four.
Nope.
That's good.
Everyone wants it.
Yeah, that's the one we can't, we have no control over.
Oh, is that right?
That's it, of course.
All right, well, it's better, yeah, it's better.
It's better anyway, that's good, thank you.
Is there sound?
It's just music, it doesn't-
Oh.
We don't need, we don't need the cheesy music.
Oh, come on, I've been listening to it for a whole year.
It's still all right.
Okay, okay. John. Ladies and gentlemen, please don't offer any comments during the course of this film, thank you.
Mr. Crimco, are you suggesting that that be marked for evidence at this time?
Well, no, I'm not, only because the person who prepared it is not my next witness, so as soon as he comes up, I'll have that marked in.
That's excellent.
Okay, what I, what I would like to do next is introduce my first witness, and good, we're before ten o'clock, we can get started. It's the project engineer, Jeremy Lang from Mazor Consulting, and he will be referencing all of the items that I moved in for identification, so when he's done with his testimony, at that point, we can then move it in for evidence. I'd like to have him sworn, qualified, because I don't know if he's appeared here before.
I have not.
If you can stand, raise your right hand, please. If you're perhaps to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do, thank you.
Could you state your name for the record and give the board and the public the benefit of your experience as both an engineer and a professional planner?
Certainly, good evening. Jeremy Lang from Mazor Consulting, where I'm a senior principal, and I run the Site Civil Group in our Red Bank, New Jersey office. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I've been so licensed since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I've been so licensed since two thousand. All told, I have over twenty-four years of experience in engineering and planning services. I'm also a certified municipal engineer, a certified floodplain manager, and I've been designated as an engineering expert witness by the American Council of Engineering Companies.
And you've appeared as an expert in front of numerous boards across the state?
Yes.
We'd submit him as an expert unless the board...
Can I ask him one question? Can you tell me where you went to school?
Rutgers.
All right, we recognize you as an expert, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
L, go ahead.
L-A-N-G-E.
Thank you, so Jeremy, understanding that I moved your PowerPoint exhibit, now, I introduced your PowerPoint exhibit in as A twenty-six, and I understand that you're going to be relying on that during the, during your presentation. We can go through, and as we go through it, you can... At the end of it, we can talk about which items need to additionally be moved in. So since you're the expert as to the engineering, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Well, thank you again, again, Jeremy Lang, for the record. So I do have a PowerPoint this evening where I'm going to run through, first, all the civil engineering portion of it, and then the latter half of the PowerPoint goes into the few variances that we do have, where I'll be more in a capacity of a professional planner. So to begin, just to orientate the board as to where we're located, the subject site is right in the middle of the site. It's located in the center of that photograph there, and you'll see that the...
Excuse me, can we dim the lights again? Thank you.
So the subject site is right here in the middle of this slide, slide number two. You'll see that Deal Road is running left to right in the middle of the sheet. Been bracketing the photograph on either side. We have New Jersey State Route eighteen running up and down, and similarly, we have Wellpon Road running north and south on the right-hand side. So what I've done, this is the same exhibit now, but now I've placed the color rendering of the site plan on the rendering. So again, you can now see it in context of the existing development along the Route thirty-five corridor. You'll see that it completes this corridor nicely as a similar extent to the other development up and down the corridor to the north and south. So as I just said, it's a mixed-use development, and that's exactly what is envisioned here under the zoning. We are in the C-seven zone, which is a mixed-use district, providing for a variety of both commercial and residential uses. So to begin the application, firstly, the thing we need to do is kind of set the table for that commercial and residential use I just described. So to do that, we're proposing a subdivision. It's a rather simple subdivision where we only have two lots. So you'll see in the blue, on the left side, Lot nineteen oh two, that's the commercial half of the project. On the right side, Lot nineteen oh three, and again, these would be proposed lots. That would be the residential portion. You see in the left side that I've enumerated the acreages for both, approximately fourteen point eight seven acres on the commercial side and fourteen point five two on the residential side. I will note that the site plan cover sheet is a little out of date. These were updated over the last few months, and we missed updating that on the site plan cover sheet. But the acreages that are shown here are correct and are accurately reflected on the subdivision plan that was submitted as part of the application. You'll note that these two acreages don't total, the total lot acreage of just over thirty-one acres. The reason for that is there's a substantial right-of-way dedication as part of the application. That is shown in the purple along the lower portion of the exhibit, which is slide five. So there's two separate right-of-way dedications. You'll see those are enumerated on the right side, where the DOT dedication is approximately one point four or five acres, and then the Towne-Schubel motion is just under a quarter of an acre. So in terms of the subdivision, now, this is just for the bulk requirements of the property itself, not having to do with any improvements on it. You'll see that it's fully conforming in all of the bulk aspects. The total lot area is thirty-one point oh eight acres, that exceeds the twenty-eight. The individual lots are over the fourteen and ten required for commercial and residential respectively. And then the minimum lot frontages for commercial applications are also met. Actually, they're significantly exceeded in both cases. Again, continuing that set-the-table parameter, next thing we had to do is kind of identify what are the constraints beyond local zoning. Primarily, those have to do with wetlands, freshwater wetlands, and floodplains. We have gone ahead with the DEP and verified the extents of both. You'll see up here the dates and the file numbers from the NJDEP. The top one here has to do with the freshwater wetlands and the extent of the transition area that is offset from that. The lower one has to do with the extent of the floodplain and repairing zones, and again, the file number's there.
And Jeremy, that's consistent, those numbers are consistent with the copies that your office submitted to the board that I introduced for identification purposes, A twenty and A twenty-one?
That's correct. So now, moving from the subdivision, we're going to dive right into the site plan. So this is again, an overall color rendering. The layout, et cetera, is identical. The difference between this and the submitted plans is the fact that it is color rendered, and it's really several of the site plans aggregated together. So to give you an overview of how we laid the project out, I think it's good to look at it from a north-south and an east-west perspective. So from a north-south perspective, and just for everybody, the north is located directly up on the sheet. So we start here on the north, where we have a proposed hotel on the commercial side, and then on the residential side, we've got two townhome buildings. These townhome buildings and the hotel, you'll see, they kind of form a line. So these give a very nice buffering to enhance. So I'll talk about other buffering, we have substantial wooded buffers as well further north. But in terms of the layout itself, buffering was one of the concerns when we laid out the project. So we wanted to have backyards facing our neighbors to the north, and on the commercial side, we wanted to have essentially the biggest thing we had on the project, to form a barrier essentially. So this really, as a four-story hotel, which I'll provide a lot more detail later, provides a very nice barrier from the commercial activity within. Beyond that, as you move into the site, we've located the less intense uses, so specifically, the retail use is a lesser intense as retail goes in the center of the site. And then as you move to the periphery of the site, that's when we get into the restaurant uses, which typically have more activity and the like. We use the same approach from an east-west perspective. So we have the adjacent park immediately to our east, and then what we've done here, same thing, we've got the building set up to provide that same buffer. We've got it so that we have backyards fronting that park. And then as you move toward the west, you go through the residential, through another buffer, and then into the commercial. And then same idea, again, with the commercial, as you're moving out, we've got the retail, and then out on the highway frontage, we've got the convenience store with the gas station, and then also the quick-service restaurant. So our most intense uses, our busiest uses are out on Route thirty-five where they belong. As you come back in, we have more of our sit-down restaurants. These are not quite the turnover you would see at a quick-service restaurant, so there's just a little bit less activity as you move into the center. You've got even less activity at the retail, and then finally, the hotel, you know, almost a quasi-residential use, just short-term stays. So we think in terms of the planning and the layout, it's very thoughtful, fully respects and understands the setting we're in in terms of the park, the residential uses to our north, and then also makes sense with the highways, particularly Route thirty-five obviously being a major state highway. So in terms of, now that we've got the general layout, we have to put the whole thing together. So we've got several kind of key improvements that are necessary for the development overall. I've titled it here, characterized it here as an infrastructure spine. You'll see there's a few different roadways. I'll just start here from Route thirty-five. You come in roughly in the center of our frontage after the dedication to the DOT. You've got a right-in, right-out driveway, and driveway that heads essentially east-west that provides access to the entire commercial area of the project, and then also comes down and tees into our residential area. From, or is a kind of a shoot off of that, branched off of that, between the retail and bifurcating the two restaurants, which we've titled as A and B on the plan, we've got another major roadway, and that accesses two different points on Deal Road. Specifically, there's a right-in, right-out driveway located right here on the bottom of the sheet, and then that tees into yet another roadway that comes over through the end of the residential area, and then comes out to the existing traffic signal at Deal and Logan. As Mrs. Crimco mentioned earlier, we also have a driveway tying into the adjacent library and museum property. The parking lot is just off the view of this particular slide.
And that connection was required by the ordinance?
Yes, that connection is part of the C-seven ordinance requirements. So we have the spine road. Within that roadway, also, we have our key utilities, stormwater. We have sanitary sewer, domestic water, fire protection water, all located through those areas, the kind of main spine, and then they branch off the service to each of the buildings. We have key stormwater management facilities, I've labeled them as SWM. There are many more stormwater management facilities on the project, but these are the ones that serve the infrastructure roadway. You'll see in purple over here, I've got the jug handle ramp. The traffic engineer's going to talk a lot more about the jug handle and the operation of the signal at Deal and Route thirty-five, so as, not to steal his thunder, I'm going to leave it there. But I will just note that we do have a dedicated stormwater facility for that jug handle as well. As part of that jug handle improvement, we are also relocating the bus shelter that's in this location, just moving it north. And then we are providing pedestrian connectivity both from Deal Road and Route thirty-five, and then, as you'll see as we go through the site plan, this pedestrian connectivity throughout the entire project. So now, I'm going to go through, kind of break the project down piece by piece. So you'll see I've got the color rendering here only for kind of location. So the hotel we're going to talk about first is located in the northerly end of the commercial area, which is the westerly half of the project. What I've then done is just brought a blow-up in so that we can actually see the hotel and the layout around it. Again, you'll see that the hotel has been oriented to act as a buffering of itself, but then even the hotel's activities have been set to the front of the hotel. So there's an outdoor sports court, there's an outdoor patio area, there's an indoor pool area. They've all been put in the front or on the southerly side of the hotel, so they are not affecting our neighbors to the north. In terms of the parking, same idea. As you can see here, the bulk of the parking is located right in front of the hotel, and again, that activity of people coming and going with their suitcases, et cetera, is all happening in front of the building. The hotel itself is four stories, hundred and fourteen rooms. There are a hundred and fourteen parking stalls right in this area here, and then there's an additional twenty parking stalls located just to the left of the exhibit, but west as the north hour points. And that provides some overflow parking, so if there's more than one car per room, et cetera, that is there, and that's consistent with the ordinance to have a shared parking approach, because we, I'll get to later when we get to the quick-service restaurant, we have more than enough parking in this area, so by sharing the parking, we're having excellent parking for peak uses at the Chick-fil-A or the quick-service restaurant, but at the same time, providing adequate parking for the hotel without creating duplicative asphalt areas.
And, but we're not asking for parking variances to the number of spots. Overall, for the property, we meet the ordinance requirement?
Yes, the ordinance fully complies. The shared parking concept is actually in the ordinance. And it's really not even shared parking, because there is enough parking for all the uses, just outright by the numbers. But really, here, we're talking about parking massing and its relationship to each of the uses. There's also a drop-off area, pretty generous drop-off area right here in this curve. Again, we put that, you know, that would be the most active area, and we've put that right in front of the center of the hotel here, and again, to be as far away and in between, have the hotel rather in between us and that activity. I'm not going to go through all this, this is on the plans and obviously on the slides you have in front of you, but the hotel is fully conforming in terms of all the bulk requirements that are laid out in the ordinance. The next, now, this is immediately west, or as we're looking at the slides to the left, the quick-service restaurant, currently branded as a Chick-fil-A. So you can see this is the, on the right side here, the blow-up, that's the end of the hotel, and then this whole area is the quick-service restaurant. Immediately to the left here is Route thirty-five. Immediately below is that center spine road I talked about earlier, that's coming off of Route thirty-five. The restaurant itself is approximately five thousand two hundred twenty-eight square feet, containing approximately a hundred and eight seats. There are, in this area, there are a total of sixty-two parking stalls, but as I just indicated, about twenty of them are earmarked for the hotel. So that leaves you with forty-two, which is more than enough for the restaurant, but we'd like to have that additional flexibility, so if there's a peak period, the restaurant also has that parking available. You'll see there's a dual-ordering canopy. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, that is one of our variances. But for now, I'll point out where it is on the plan. And what we've done is put the whole drive-through on this westerly side. And what that does for us by kind of, see this U-shape what we've got as you go around this phase, that maximizes the length of both the ordering queue as well as the pickup queue, without it having any chance of impeding or backing up on any of the intersections, both internally as well as the access intersections from public roadways. We wanted to be very conscious of that, that if there was any queuing or spillover, that it was happening within this specific use, not affecting the other uses on the site, and particularly not causing any kind of congestion on the site. So very intentional to lay it out the way it is. So the next now is the retail area. This is in the center of the site. So it's this structure right here, center of the commercial area, immediately south of that commercial access spine road. It's a one-story building, it's approximately five thousand four hundred square feet. This has a total in this area of forty-three parking stalls, but in a similar arrangement to what we did with the hotel, this is sharing parking with the restaurant and office that are immediately to the south. So there's a total of thirty-five that are specifically for the retail, but there are forty-three spaces here, because eight of them are being shared.
Jeremy, when you say specifically for the retail, we're not designating any, we're not labeling any as parking only. What you're saying is, from a practical standpoint in design, you allotted for the thirty-five for it to make sure that you had enough, and then you had the extras that could be more flex spaces for either use. And then you had the extras that could be more flex spaces for either use.
Exactly. Well said. Next there I want to point out is immediately to the east of the retail, right off the branch of the spine road, we do have a loading area. This is relatively small retail. The whole building's only 5,400 square feet. So we're not, it's not a big box store. We're not expecting numerous tractor trailers, et cetera, or anything that requires a loading dock. This is more hand truck type deliveries off of what are primarily either single-unit trucks or smaller tractor trailers, not the over-road tractor trailers. Although it could accommodate that if necessary. But that wouldn't be typical, these type of retail uses. Next now, moving to the south, is that restaurant I just referred to earlier.
And in the, in the movie, that was the one that was shown as the Turning Point?
Correct.
Just for reference.
You'll notice, and you may have noticed that in the movie as well, that this was a two-story building. So you've got the Turning Point Restaurant on the first floor. And then there's office space on the second floor above that. The total parking in this area here is 49 parking stalls. And then there's that eight flex parking stalls, as we just discussed earlier, located immediately to the north. There's an outdoor dining area located along the D L Road frontage, which would be a nice area they can take in the view of the traffic, et cetera, as people are moving by. People are laughing, but it's very common. You see this in a lot of downtown areas where you have outdoor dining set down Main Street. And you're sitting out in the dining area, watching the activity going on. So the concept of having outdoor dining on a traveled roadway is not new or unique. It's actually quite normal and common. It's akin to sitting out on your front porch and watching the activity going by. This also has a loading area. Also has a loading area here on the east side. So it can obviously take food deliveries, et cetera. And there's also a refuse and recycling enclosure in that location. Next is just to the east of that, a little bit northeast. So disorientation, this is that restaurant we were just speaking of, Restaurant B. It's just basically across the street. This is a little bit of a different concept, but similar idea. It's 4,700 square feet. This does have a lot more parking to provide potentially for a different type of user that might have more parking. You'll see there is not a drive-through on either this restaurant or the other. So again, these are not fast food. These are more traditional sit-down restaurants. And the variety of parking kind of speaks to the type of use that they are.
And Jeremy, just again for reference, in the video, it was shown as a sushi restaurant. And in the plans that were submitted, it was designed as a Zen Burger. Because as of this moment, there is no prospective specific tenant. So we're just generally seeking approval for the, for the footprint. Should we have a tenant and confirmed architecturals at the time when we reach conclusion? We would move those into evidence and be, any approvals should we get them would be specific to those. Should we not, then if as and when we have a tenant and we want to fit it out differently than the architectural plans that are submitted, we would be required to come back to the board to do that if it required any changes? Just so it wasn't confusing that when we show the architecturals, it'll say Zen Burger. The movie showed a sushi restaurant.
So similarly to the restaurant, we've got an outdoor dining area. We've located that to the southwest. So we're farther away from the backyards of our adjacent townhome community. We also have a loading area here that you basically pass right through and then back into. In terms of all the commercial areas, so now these are the restaurants, the retail. This chart here, again, this is on the site plan. But this goes through an analysis for the zoning. And you'll see that we are conforming in all respects in terms of the commercial uses. Now I'm going to move to the automotive, gas, and convenience store. It's branded as a Wawa and some of the materials that you have in front of you. And it's, was branded that way in the video that we saw in the beginning. This is a one-story structure, approximately 5,051 square feet. There are 48 parking stalls located in this area. In addition to that, we have a fueling canopy that has six dispensers. Those dispensers are dual-sided, so that means we have 12 fueling positions. And then along the rear of the Wawa, which is really the east, easterly side, that's where we have the loading zone for that use. In terms of the gas convenience, again, fully conforming. I won't read through each one of these, but again, this is on the site plan and demonstrates that we are meeting all the ordinance requirements in terms of the bulk setbacks. Parking overall, what we've done here in this chart is done kind of a holistic parking analysis. It is broken down for each use, so you can see the required and proposed. You'll see these little parenthetical notations with the plus or minus 20 and the plus or minus 8. Those are those flex stalls that we talked about earlier. And then you can see that taken in the aggregate, the individual uses meet the parking. This is important because we want to make sure our massing is correct. We don't want to load all the parking in one portion of the project and not be convenient to another portion. So we are fully meeting the requirements individually at each location. And then you'll see in totality, we actually have more parking than is necessary. And that provides us with some flexibility, particularly this Restaurant B, where we really don't know the end user. We've built in some more flexibility there just in case. Once we know an end user, we'll be able to see if that still makes sense or not. We could always landbank some parking stalls if that made sense for that end user. In terms of the parking stall size, fully conforming at 9 by 18, and the minimum setback of 50 feet is provided. So now I'm going to kind of switch gears, slip to the other side, which is the east side of the project, where we go into our residential component. There are a total of 70 dwellings proposed in 12 buildings. These would be two-story units. They would contain up to four bedrooms, two-car garages. And then the site has a variety of head-on and parallel visitor parking, which more than satisfies the RSIS requirements for visitor parking.
And just because not everybody is intimately familiar, RSIS is the Residential Site Improvement Standards. It's the state regulations which govern certain aspects of residential development. Is that correct?
That's correct. In terms of access overall, we've essentially come up with a loop road that has three points of access. It's a 30-foot-wide roadway, and it's accessed from three points. One is that center spine road that was coming in from Route 35. And then this secondary spine road that connects in two locations on D L Road, one being the Logan intersection with D L where the signal is. And then the other being that new right-in, right-out intersection that we're proposing just east of the new jug handle. So that loop circulation provides safe and convenient circulation. You'll be able to head in a multitude of directions very easily from your home. In addition, for vehicle access, we also have sidewalks on both sides of the road. Those sidewalks tie in to the commercial area as well as to the adjacent library and museum. So we think the pedestrian circulation is excellent here. And providing this direct access to commercial definitely promote this type of lifestyle being essentially in transitional area with commercial to residential. Similar analysis to the commercial uses, we went through and compared all the bulk requirements. Again, you'll see that they're all meeting as you go through and compare your line. Again, these are on the plans as well. So this analysis is a little bit more now the holistic analysis of the overall site. So what we've done here is looked at coverages as well as buffers to confirm they conform, which in fact they do. So a couple of key things here. Total maximum building coverage commercial is under the maximum 8% at 7.8. In terms of the residential, we're actually well under the coverage at 8.7% compared to 15. In terms of open space, we're over-doubled the open space required at approximately 53.5%. The breakdown of that, you can see is well split between the commercial and residential. So again, it's kind of like the parking massing. We talked about the buffer massing, if you will, is well distributed around the site. Then if we go through here, various buffer requirements from D L Road, from Route 35, the northern property line. You'll see in each case, we're either meeting or exceeding the ordinance requirement in terms of those buffers. So now I want to go through an overview of the site signage. So I'm going to start out on Route 35. We've got a pylon sign. It's fully conforming in terms of, excuse me, its size and height. There is a question, however, on the text identifying the site itself. So this is not tenant or a retail use, but more of a wayfinding text. If that's interpreted as part of the sign, then it would exceed the sign area. So we would ask the board, I guess, one for an interpretation and then two, if it is considered part of the sign, is that something that the board feels is appropriate from a wayfinding standpoint? Or is that something that should be removed from the sign and then simply have the text within the, I'll call the white area here where the tenant signs and the logo version town center are located?
And just to go a step further, as the board knows, the township ordinance requires you take the text of your sign and draw a box around it. And that's effectively what your sign size is. When you draw a box around the white portion of the sign, which was what the applicant's position that the, that the text of the sign or the message of the sign was, we need it at 148 square feet where 150 feet is required. But as part of the architectural detail as it were, and to identify the center, they chose from an architectural standpoint, and there'll be more testimony from the architect to put the name of the center, which clearly identifies it as the Ocean Town Center, on the blue portion. And again, the architect will go into materials and what's backlit and what isn't. So if you take the box around all of the lettering, including the name of the center, we do exceed the side, the sign size. We are asking, we didn't recognize it as a variance. It was pointed out in Jim's report. We would ask for that variance at this point. And obviously, as we go through, that may change. So we can discuss that in greater detail with the architect as well as when Bill and Jim offer their comments.
So in terms of the other kind of important characteristics, the 148 square feet, again, is that white area as was just described. The sign is conforming at 25 feet tall. It's internally illuminated, setback 15 feet. And you'll see on landscaping plans, and there's an excerpt of that here on the slide 25, it's fully landscaped around the base in addition to the decorative base that is part of the structure. The next, also on Route 35, is the Wawa pylon sign. You'll see where that's located here with the orange arrow. That's all, excuse me, that sign is also fully conforming at 50 square feet, 20 feet tall. It has LED illumination. So it's a little bit different than internally illuminated because the sign, there are more channel letters. So they're lit as channel letters as opposed to the whole box being lit. So that's the distinction there. And again, 15-foot setback in terms of the base. You've got a consistent base on the, this kind of stone or masonry look. And then again, have a very nice landscaping package all around the sign. Next has to do with a monument sign on D L Road. This is located immediately east of the jug handle ramp. And this is obviously much shorter. It's six feet tall, 48 square feet, and will be setback 15 feet, therefore fully conforming. There is a, again, a landscape package around that, although a little bit different. This is a much smaller sign, so landscaping, of course, is in keeping with that smaller size. There's another sign, Wawa, gas sign proposed at the right-in, right-out driveway on D L Road.
Jeremy, let me just quickly jump in and address that. Just so the board understands, the way the ordinance was written for C seven, there's a... Because, Jim, I'm just going over the Wawa sign, so I want you to be able to hear that. The way the ordinance is written, there is a distinction between the signage permitted for the gasoline and convenience store versus the rest of the commercial. It's actually written up in two separate sections. And it appears, and again, your trusty planner in his review letter pointed out that originally the comment was that the Wawa is too close to residential because the section that addresses the commercial signage has a certain distance for signs to be from residential. However, that, that restriction is not placed in the section of the ordinance that governs the convenience gas. Unfortunately, also what's not in the section for the convenience gases actually allowing that second sign along D L Road. So we discovered only through the review from your board engineer, from your board planner, that the second Wawa sign that Jeremy's about to speak about requires a variance for its existence where the one along 35 is permitted. And we are asking for a second monument sign along D L Road. So I just wanted to...
Can we take a one-minute recess?
Sure.
One minute?
Okay. We had a conversation. When I was looking at the clock, I think we started at 9:30, not 9:15, because there was a little bit of a conversation about notice. So Ms. Krimko really didn't start until 15 minutes after. Some people might have thought she started. But in the issue of continuity, and so that everybody gets to look at this clearly, I would like to continue this meeting until 11 o'clock. Giving her... Yes, could I have a...
It's just a motion to be ruled on by the board. It's in the board's discretion.
So I'm asking for a motion to continue to 11 o'clock tonight.
Can the people have anything to say about it if we all...
No.
I have, we have, we have a few things that we would like to say. We donate our time to be here on the board, and this is a pretty involved application. We would like to have them have their time to say what they need to say.
Yeah, but we, we don't have our attorney here, who we retain because...
That's not, I'm, I'm sorry your attorney's not here. But that has nothing to do with the application.
Jackie, we had, we had this...
Make a motion that we stay until 11 P.M., please.
Will somebody second that motion?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Want to proceed?
Sure.
Okay, so Ms. Krimko has just given us the, kind of the segue here into the Wawa sign. So that is proposed at the westerly driveway on D L Road. The, the bulk requirements here, the ordinance does allow for a sign at a secondary driveway on D L Road. There is a requirement for that sign to be 200 feet from a residential property line, which this is not. It's roughly 80 feet from an adjacent residential use across D L Road. But that, the numbers or the, the kind of the size of the sign was guided based on those standards for what would have otherwise gone at a secondary driveway. There is, and I don't want to get too far in my planning testimony, but there are some reasons to put the driveway here as opposed to immediately next to the jug handle, which, some of which might be self-evident, such as traffic safety. So we definitely wanted to have a gap there. And then that forces the driveway and then the sign that is associated with driveway further down the road. So that's the thinking. But it is a variance and certainly something the board will, I'm sure, deliberate on and, you know, fully contemplate. So as proposed, it's 28 square feet, just under six feet tall. Similar to the Wawa pylon sign, it's LED illuminated. So it's not the entire box is lit, it's just the lettering itself and of course, the fuel prices. And it's also 15-foot setback or will be 15-foot setback as required by the ordinance. The other sign that we have on D L Road is for the residential community. You can see here what that looks like. The monument sign is at the signalized intersection of D L and Logan. It's approximately 40 square feet, five foot eight inches tall, and will be internally illuminated and then also 15 feet setback.
And just before you go on, and I know that we'll get into it more when we talk about the planning, but the, the, the purpose of the Wawa secondary sign is, one, to allow for those travelers on D L Road to know as they're heading westerly on D L Road that there is in fact a gas station at that location so they can turn it without having to go onto the highway.
Yes, it provides a shortcut, if you will, without having to go through the signalized intersection of D L and Route 35. You can basically bypass that, come right into the site. You also know what the gas price is as you're going down the road. So you can determine without having to go in and check it and then potentially just turn and come back. Now you'll, you'll be able to conveniently know what that price is and whether or not you want to make the trip in the first place. Um, in terms of utilities, uh, we're being serviced by the Township of Ocean, uh, Shore Authority. Uh, there is sufficient capacity to treat the, the project. Um, from a water perspective, it's New Jersey American Water Company. Likewise, they also have sufficient water capacity. Um, there is a twelve-inch water main in DL Road. Uh, we are making two different connections to that, uh, that are uh, coincident with the two driveways on DL Road. Those are represented on the plan with these blue arrows that you see, uh, kind of pointing in both directions. It's connecting that twelve-inch water line, uh, into the site. Uh, the site itself will have, uh, similarly a twelve-inch water line that will be the spine, uh, and go around the site and then service all the individual buildings and the residential units. Uh, in a similar fashion, uh, we have a connection to the, uh, overall sanitary sewer system, which is actually the twenty-four inch sanitary that's located along Poplar Brook. Uh, you'll see this green arrow here kind of going parallel into the north on Route thirty-five up to the brook. Um, and we're going to be connecting to that twenty-four inch main on that location. Uh, and then throughout the site, there's an eight-inch, uh, sanitary main, uh, spine that's going all throughout the site. That's collecting all the commercial uses as well as the residential buildings. Um, in terms of the site lighting, uh, all the proposed fixtures are LEDs, so they're very energy efficient. Um, the pole mounting heights, uh, vary a little bit, but not too much, uh, from twenty to twenty-two feet. Uh, by commercial standards, this is certainly on the shorter side, uh, especially for development of the side, size, excuse me. Uh, but it does allow us to give, um, some really nice lighting on the site, uh, with very minimal spillage, uh, which you'll see when you look at the lighting analysis. Uh, also around the hotel, uh, what we've decided to do there rather than have pole-mounted lights, uh, particularly in the rear of the hotel, uh, they're necessary for security for the pedestrian access. Uh, we wanted to keep those very low to the ground, so they're bollard-mounted lights. Um, that'll be much, uh, less intrusive than a pole-mounted light, uh, would be. Um, you'll see that in the, uh, site plan, there's a point-by-point analysis as we refer to it, which basically shows the effect of the lights on the ground, uh, when they're all turned on. And you'll see that we don't have any of what we call spillage. In other words, the light doesn't leave the boundary of the site, uh, except at the driveways, which is by design or on purpose. Uh, so each of the driveways on Route thirty-five and DL Road, uh, we do have some lights filling out into the intersection because we obviously want to light those intersections from a safety perspective. Uh, on the plans, there's a table that provides some of the, uh, kind of a summary, if you will, statistical analysis. Um, you'll see that when you look at the pole-mounted fixtures, uh, we're fully conforming. That's what this table here represents. Uh, there is an asterisk note here, um, the bollards actually require a variance. Uh, it's technical in nature, um, but that's because the light source is so close to the ground. Um, it's difficult to have the light throw as far as we need it without overlighting the ground immediately uh, under the light, but that is a very limited effect. It's right at the base of the light, uh, within three feet of that base. Um, the alternative would be a fully complying pole-mounted fixture, but that puts the light source, uh, much higher, um, and has the potential for more spill and glare, uh, to our neighbors to the north in particular behind the hotel. So we felt this was a better design alternative, uh, because we're going to have much less glare, keep it very low to the ground. Uh, and the extensive wooded buffer that we have will be much more successful at shielding that, uh, than as compared to pole-mounted fixtures.
Jeremy, in a layman's terms, simply put, the only area we're non-compliant is three feet around those bollards within the hotel parking lot.
Around the hotel, yes. Yeah, and it's really along the sidewalk essentially around the hotel, so it provides security lighting around the perimeter of the hotel, uh, as well as the sidewalk that goes completely around the hotel. Uh, so that way that area is safe. We don't have loitering or other types of things. And obviously the security of the site is, i- is important to the site, but also to the whole overall area.
But no impact off-site?
But no impact off-site, no.
Okay.
Those light, that's part of the beauty of that, because they are so short, um, their impact is very limited to that local area right by the sidewalk. Uh, it's very quickly cut off, uh, because they're so close to the ground. Um, in terms of the landscaping, um, it, there's an extensive landscaping package, so I'm not going to go through all the species, uh, that we have. But, uh, they are either natives or appropriate for this plant hardiness zone. Um, they're all low maintenance, uh, where they're near, uh, roadways or parking. They're drought and salt tolerant. Um, and it's a, we believe is a nice combination of deciduous evergreen and ornamental trees. Uh, so give that a little bit of sample and a breakdown on the commercial side. We're landscaping the drive aisles, the parking lot islands, um, the bio-retention areas, uh, and then around the sign bases. You can see on the right here is a little clip of one of the landscape plants, and you can see the tremendous amount of detail, the density of trees and shrubs that are located in each of the islands. Uh, again, this is just a sample. The overall plan, of course, has, uh, all the details and they're fully labeled. But I just wanted to give you an idea of the intensity of the landscaping, uh, that's in each of the islands because you really can't see it looking at the rendering. Uh, so here you can see there's just so many little dots. Every one of those represents, uh, a tree or shrub. Uh, we did a similar thing on the residential side. We've got street trees. You can see the street trees lining the roadways, uh, up and down the roadways. Uh, the parking areas where we have had on parking are also landscaped. Uh, again, the bio-retention basin, which in this case is located here in the, uh, northwesterly portion of the residential area. Uh, the sign again is landscaped. Uh, we've got four different foundation planting plans, so, uh, there'll be a variety of foundation plantings around each of the buildings. See that on the rendering, it's not depicted, uh, but when you look at the detailed plans, you'll see that, uh, there are four different designs for that. Uh, there's also a community garden area proposed. It's actually part of our buffer. Um, it's located between Restaurant B and this, um, south westerly most townhome building. Um, and there's also an area for potential, um, outdoor play area at the southernmost ends of that. Uh, in terms of the buffer, again, they're either, uh, meeting or exceeding the requirements, uh, to the north. Uh, we have a two-hundred, uh, to two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer located along that northerly property line. On the, uh, Route thirty-five side, we have a thirty-five-foot buffer. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit later. There is a technical variance there, uh, because of the way the ordinance is written, but that'll make a lot of sense when I, uh, explain it to you. But in terms of the width, uh, it is exactly as wide as it needs to be. On DL Road, we've got the buffer seventy-five feet wide along the whole, uh, DL Road frontage with our residential portion, and that even comes into in accordance with the ordinance, uh, a little bit of the commercial area as well.
What's that dark space there?
The, here.
It appears in...
For here.
Yeah.
That's the, uh, that's actually an evergreen buffer, um, located between the residential and the commercial, uh, within the site internally. So we've got buffers around the perimeter and then an interior buffer, uh, in this location where the, the residential and commercial get close together. And that's a fifty-foot buffer. Um, so stormwater management, um, one of my favorite topics, so...
And before you start, I just want to put it on the record for Sandy's purposes. What you're talking about is all part of the stormwater management report that we introduced as A four. Is that correct? That's what all this is from?
That's correct.
Okay.
So stormwater management goals, um, there are more of them, but I've just given you a flavor. We want to mimic the existing hydrology. So in other words, uh, where the stormwater goes today, we went trying to mimic those. Of course, you can't be identical because you're developing the site. Uh, but we can certainly mimic that hydrology, and I'm going to explain how we did that. Uh, we want to reduce proposed peak runoff rates. Uh, we want to promote recharge into the soil. Uh, there are two geotechnical reports that were submitted, um, and they essentially, uh, confirm the, uh, web soil survey, which maps this as hydro, hydrologic soil groups A and B. Uh, these are typically sandy soils that are very permeable. Uh, so in other words, water goes through the soil very well. Um, so there's, you'll see that this design takes advantage of that, and we are promoting a lot of recharge in our many stormwater facilities. Uh, part of what that does is support stream base flow. Um, as many of you may know, we have the Poplar Brook immediately to our north. Uh, so it's important that we continue to provide, uh, base flows. This is not during storm events or flooding flow, but in those dry times, middle of the summer, uh, we want to make sure there's a healthy amount of base flow, uh, to maintain the ecology along that stream corridor. Uh, recharge is the way to do that because you essentially bank the water underground, um, in shallow aquifers, and that slowly bleeds out to the stream. That's a, uh, a very natural process, uh, and how streams maintain base flow during dry periods. Uh, and then finally, we want to mitigate water quality. Um, although we're well under the ordinance's maximums, there still is a fair amount of impervious surface, so water quality is very important. Uh, you'll see we've gone to fairly great extents, uh, to deal with that as well.
Jeremy, just for clarification, in addition to meeting the township ordinance requirements and Bill Fitzgerald's review as it relates to the, uh, the, the run, the drainage, uh, we also, because we have to get permits from the DEP, it's also subject to the state review and their state requirements. So it's not just the municipality looking at this engineering as it relates to, uh, stormwater. It's the state as well.
It's actually even more than the state. The county looks at it. The Soil Conservation District looks at it. It's amazing how many people review, uh, stormwater management. So, uh, by the time this is all said and done, it will have been reviewed by many, many different entities. So how are we going to accomplish all those goals I just laid out? Uh, we're going to go into green infrastructure. Quick aside, the, these aren't rules yet, but the state in, uh, December third of last year rolled out a, uh, proposal to amend the state's stormwater rules, uh, where they actually require green infrastructure. Um, I'm happy to say I actually wrote the model ordinance under a DEP grant that that, um, is based on. I didn't write the language, but the framework of the state rule is actually based on a model ordinance I prepared. Um, green infrastructure is something near and dear to my heart. Uh, so this project is moving a huge step in that direction. Um, unfortunately, until the rule is fully, uh, realized and adopted, we can't take full advantage of it because there's actually some conflicts in the current rules that are obstacles to green infrastructure. Uh, but to the extent we can, uh, do that under the current rules, we've absolutely rolled that out, um, and you'll see that now as I go through everything. So in terms of, uh, stormwater management, I'm just gonna kind of go through the site piece by piece. Uh, so in terms of the northwest corner of the project, so this is the, uh, convenience store, gas, uh, excuse me, um, this book, this is the Chick-fil-A, so totally the northwest. The, uh, quick service restaurant, you can see the canopy here. That's the edge of the, uh, restaurant building. The edge of the hotels right over here on the right. Uh, we've got four different stormwater management, uh, facilities in this area. There are two bio-retention basins. Uh, one is located right along the frontage, uh, in between the, uh, drive-through lanes and Route thirty-five, and you can see that right here. Uh, the other one is located in the northwest corner, uh, just north of our right-out driveway, which actually I neglected to mention, um, when I was talking about the access. There is also a right-out, uh, driveway onto Route thirty-five, uh, in that northwest corner. So those are our two bio-retention basins. Uh, there's a photo here of a, another bio-retention basin that part of another one of my projects. Uh, it's not meant to be an exact representation, but more give you an idea of what a bio-retention basin is and just get an idea of what the look and feel is. Then we've got an underground infiltration basin that's located right here in the parking area for the, uh, quick service restaurant. Uh, again, representative photo, uh, a series of pipes underground that are perforated. In other words, they have holes in them, stone around the pipes that allows the water to be stored and then soak into the ground. And then finally, we have a rain garden, uh, which is one C, and that's located right here in this, uh, landscaped island. Uh, it's just another way to treat the water, uh, to break up what we call the time concentration or the speed the runoff is coming, um, off the site. So the combination of these four different facilities, um, treat the runoff in this area. Uh, now I'm going to move, uh, to the south, and this now is the, uh, Wawa or convenience and, uh, gas area. Um, we've got a kind of an innovative approach here where we've actually stacked two different treatments on top of one another. So on the ground surface, we've got a bio-retention, um, basin that again will look similar to the other ones we talked about. But underneath that, uh, we've got a structured system, um, and this is not circular pipes. Rather, these are arches. Uh, so they're stone, they're perforated like the pipes, uh, but the shape is a little different, a little more compact, uh, from a vertical perspective. And the idea is the water would go through the bio-retention surface, uh, get water quality, and then we would have, uh, storage and recharge, uh, through the underground infiltration below it. So you kind of get the best of both worlds in one, uh, overall treatment train.
And Jeremy, just to make something very clear to the board, because knowing how much the board respects Bill's opinion on all of this. Everything we're proposing has been reviewed by board and we've had by Bill, and there's probably been five or six, if not more, technical review meetings to go over the engineering details as it relates to this, to this proposed drainage. And as seen by his last review letter, which I'm sure he'll go over once you're completing your testimony, there are still issues and still some things that need to be tweaked. And what we're proposing is generally how we're handling stormwater, but everything we do will be subject to his final review approval and most importantly, sign-off. Is that correct?
That's correct, and, uh, I, I can tell you, Mr. Fitzgerald shares my passion for stormwater. We've had a number of, uh, technical review meetings. Um, it is a very complex design. There are, as you can see, I've barely scratched the surface here, and there's already been quite a few stormwater facilities. There are many more to come as I go through this. They're all interconnected, so it is a very complex model to do. Um, and Mr. Fitzgerald and I have been working together, uh, as well as my staff, to, uh, get all those things working exactly right, uh, exactly the way we want to. And I am absolutely certain, uh, that our final set of plans, uh, is hopefully approved by this board. Uh, will certainly reflect, uh, an outstanding design and, uh, technically correct. Uh, so next I'm going to move to more bio-retention basins. Uh, these are a little bit larger than the ones we showed before, so I've got a picture here on the left that's representative of what a bi- larger bio-retention basin looks like. Uh, we've got one in the Jug Handle Ramp. So just to orientate everybody, this is Route thirty-five on the left side going up and down. On the bottom, uh, left to right, that would be DL Road, and then our proposed Jug Handle Ramp is what's curving around here. Um, right in the middle, that Jug Handle is a bio-retention basin. Um, sometimes these areas can look pretty ugly when they're a standard detention basin, uh, so that's why we're proposing the bio-retention. Um, you can see we've got a nice undulating shape. It's not just a circle, uh, and you can see what these look like when they're fully landscaped. And they're, in my opinion, very attractive, and they are also particularly effective, uh, in terms of stormwater management as well as water quality. And recharge. Uh, similarly, on the other side, the outside of the Jug Handle Ramp, we have another bio-retention basin. Uh, it's a little smaller than the one in the Jug Handle, but still a nice-sized facility overall, and it would be very similarly landscaped. Um, now we're moving over, um, to, this is another combination, but now they're not on top of each other. They're kind of next to each other. Uh, we've got an area here where the, uh, Restaurant B is located here on the south side. We've got the retail building on the, uh, northwest side. There's a surface bio-retention basin. It's servicing that spine road that leads from Route thirty-five over here down into the residential community. Uh, it's also picking up from the parking lot. It goes through the bio-retention system, achieves water quality, and then the overflow is sent into the underground infiltration system, uh, where it goes down into the ground. Uh, so again, multi-step treatment, uh, and providing both, uh, thermal buffering, water quality buffering, recharge, as well as overall volume, um, management and peak management. Um, next we're moving over to the hotel area. The hotel is, uh, right here on the top. You can see the blow-up. Uh, in front of that, we've got two different basins, another combination where we've got a surface extended detention basin. Um, this area, there's a wetland finger that comes into the groundwater. It's a little shallower here, so we weren't able to get a full bio-retention system in, so instead we're doing extended detention. Uh, that ties in again to an underground infiltration basin. Um, also, uh, over in the hotel area, in this front area, we've got a nice rain garden. And again, here's some photos, uh, representative of that. This rain garden actually was done with a DEP grant recently. Has an experimental bio-retention mix. Kind of cool. Was you into that? Uh, next we're moving over into the, uh, residential area. This is the, uh, northwestern part of the residential area. Again, another combination. This actually has three different, uh, really four actually, types of BMPs. So we've got a bio-retention basin at the surface. We've got a, uh, an underground recharge, uh, trench, taking, uh, the rear lots and some of the roof, uh, for recharge. And then we've got, uh, porous pavement with underground, uh, recharge in it, underground recharge pipes, um, in the parking area and under the roadway itself. So again, multifaceted approach, uh, helps to break up time and concentration and provides a variety of different, uh, stormwater treatments and as well as, uh, recharge into the, uh, underlying ground. It's important in this area, I should have mentioned this before, uh, but that wetland finger that comes into the site, we've been careful to locate recharge facilities essentially all the way around it, uh, so that we will not dry up that wetland area as a result of development, and this is essentially providing water, uh, from the east side of that. Um, the commercial ones I described before are coming from the west. Um, next, this is along DL Road, so to orientate you, this is the, uh, intersection of our proposed driveway, DL Road and Logan. This here, it's not shown on the map, it's cut off, but that's where the traffic signal is right now. Um, you can see we've got the little driveway coming over, connecting, uh, to the library and to the museum. Uh, so this part of the buffer here will be also a bio-retention basin. Uh, same idea, it'll be a large-scale bio-retention basin, well landscaped. Uh, this one is actually, has a lot more trees in it though. Um, I didn't have a photo of one with as many trees as we have in this one, so that's the best I have. Uh, but unlike this one where it's more... Uh, but unlike this one where it's more, uh, lowland stuff, uh, this basin will actually have quite a few trees in it. Uh, trees are excellent, by the way, for soaking up stormwater, they have, uh, pretty good thirst, uh, for stormwater. So overall, the, uh, stormwater management will comply with the state stormwater rules at N J A C seven colon eight. Uh, they'll comply with the residential site improvement standards, they'll comply with the township, uh, storm control ordinance, uh, and they will be, uh, built in accordance with the New Jersey best management practices manual. So then, uh, we go into the variances, and you want me to go start that now, or?
Yeah, we have fifteen minutes.
All right. So, uh, the first variance I'm gonna talk about is an elevation variance. The ordinance, excuse me, has a requirement that limits the change in elevation. Uh, and basically says it can't be equal to or greater than two feet from the existing elevation. Um, and while that's certainly feasible in many applications on a project this size, it is more difficult to do.
Well, Jeremy, I just want to clarify, just so everybody's clear. The ordinance doesn't say the max elevation change is two feet. What the ordinance says, and it's in the general provision in the beginning, it says that if you have an elevation change of two feet or more, you need a variance for that. And I think, and I'm sure that when Jim and Bill have the opportunity to speak, that was put in that way because there were single-family homeowners who were changing their elevation and not required to go to a board, and rather than require a single-family homeowner to get a site plan, which you can't do, it was put in in such a way that in an effort to allow the board engineer and planner to review it, that it needed relief in order to get those homeowners before the board. So it doesn't list it as a requirement saying you can't have more than two feet. It's saying if you have more than two feet, you need to get a variance and have that reviewed. So I just want to clear that up. We'll, we'll let him finish all of that and, you know, Bill and Jim can go into it afterwards. But I think it's not in the bulk requirements, it's in the requirements applying to all zones at the beginning of the ordinance.
So with that background, uh, we think it's certainly justified here. Uh, it certainly would be typical, uh, in terms of a large-scale development like this. Uh, because you want to create aesthetic interest across the view shed, uh, particularly from Route thirty-five. Uh, and in particular, we want to allow for the parking areas, uh, to be flatter from an accessibility standpoint. So we want each of those parking areas to essentially be plateaus, and then we want to have grade changes between them. That does two things, it provides for that aesthetic interest, uh, across the view shed because not, everything's at a constant slope, there's flatter than seeped and, and so forth, that undulates nicely. Uh, but at the same time, it allows those parking areas, not only the, the mandatory handicap parking, uh, stalls and the accessibility routes, uh, but also the parking lot generally speaking, uh, can be much flatter, uh, so you don't get car doors slamming or opening, you don't get, uh, the runaway shopping carts, you know, things like that. Uh, it just makes it a much nicer experience, uh, for, for those that live and work or shop there. The, uh, commercial and residential road slopes are very accessible as well. Obviously for a car, it's not a big deal, but as you recall, I testified that there are sidewalks along all these roadways, so we are intending for pedestrian connectivity. And that one to two percent, uh, slope is very nice and easy to walk on. Uh, and it actually meets the A D A accessible route, uh, standards, uh, for all those sidewalks. Now, the site is bike and pedestrian friendly, again, those slopes make it easier. Uh, you know, on a bike, it's a little easier to do the slopes, but, uh, for those of us like myself, a little bit out of shape, uh, it doesn't hurt when those slopes are a little flatter. Um, retaining walls that we do have in the job are generally faced into the stormwater basin, so they're obscured from public view, so we're not creating some mammoth wall. When you're driving down the highway, you're not going to be looking at a large retaining wall. Uh, that was something we put a lot of care into. In fact, that's a good example, uh, that unique basin that I talked about earlier where we have the bioretention on top of those arches, uh, that was a solution to eliminate law, walls along the frontage. Uh, otherwise, that might have been a bioretention basin that had depth and therefore retaining walls. So Mr. Fitzgerald was concerned, and I thought it was an excellent point, uh, but that wouldn't look so good as you drove down Route thirty-five. So our solution to that was that innovative approach of stacking the two B M Ps eliminated the walls altogether. Uh, so I think that was certainly an excellent outcome of the T R C process. The, um, the site is well buffered from all sides, I've already, uh, explained that. And then again, the sheer size and length of the view shed makes the grain change, uh, imperceptible. So it's not, even though there, we are changing the elevation by more than two feet, it will not appear that way, uh, as you're looking at the site. Uh, hopefully the video gave you some sense of that, and that was, the elevations in that video were accurate, uh, relative to the site plan.
Oh, that's an important point. Well, the architect will testify as to the buildings in that the video was based to scale and accurately to the plans, the site plans that you prepared and submitted as to all of the features, the location, um, the drainage structures, the landscaping, all of that was, uh, based on your site plan and was consistent.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so the next, uh, is the Route thirty-five buffer variance. Uh, this is one of those things, I think it was an unintended consequence in the ordinance, uh, because the buffer requirements apply to all buffers. And it talks about things like a solid buffer, and that certainly makes sense to the north. It makes sense, uh, eh, over on Deal, most of Deal Road. Uh, but it does not make sense along the commercial portion of Deal Road or our Route thirty-five frontage. So we're providing the buffer width that's fully provided. Uh, the buffer is landscaped, so it will be aesthetically attractive, but we are not providing a solid, uh, buffer or, and we are not providing a berm. Uh, the reason for that is you need and want, uh, frankly, visibility, uh, from your commercial highways. Uh, that commercial view set is key to the economic vitality of the overall center. Uh, certainly, we don't want to bring a, a brand-new, uh, commercial entity or a development here and then have it turn into a blighted area, uh, some years down the road because it doesn't have a sufficient amount of, uh, visibility from the traveling public. So very, uh, critical from a planning perspective that we design, uh, to succeed. Uh, we, we have to balance that then with our desirable visual environment, uh, but it is a balancing act. It's not one extreme or the other. Uh, we believe that providing the conforming width, uh, the partial screening with the landscaping, we're getting that nice, uh, visual environment, but then we're looking through that and we're able to see the commercial uses, uh, so that those uses can, uh, remain economically viable, uh, over a period of time.
So it's your opinion, it meets the intent and purpose, although it technically doesn't meet the, uh, requirement as to the, what it's, what it's made of, but it meets it with, uh, what we're proposing.
Yes, it's, it's my opinion that's consistent or better than, uh, the character of the Route thirty-five corridor generally. Uh, but at the same time, uh, it's not so out of balance that we're actually threatening the vitality. Uh, so obviously, the ordinance intent was to make a successful, um, development on the site, uh, as, as really true with any, uh, land planning. Uh, so we're trying to balance that with the aesthetic parts of the ordinance that wanted to look good. Uh, and I think we've struck the right balance, so yes, I think we're completely in line with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Uh, and then from a public good standpoint, again, I think we're maintaining that aesthetics, but providing, uh, economically viable, um, development. Uh, in terms of the sign variance, uh, so this, I briefly touched on this before in terms of the, uh, the lettering that's on the blue portion of the sign. This is not commercial in the sense that this is not a use, this is really wayfinding. Um, just so you can say, hey, you know, I'm, either I live down, if you're in the town and community and somebody's coming down thirty-five, you can say, hey, you know, if you turn in at the Ocean Town Center driveway, just head straight back, you know, I'm unit, you know, twenty-seven, whatever it is. Uh, so from a wayfinding standpoint, I think that's excellent. Also, uh, unlike the tenant signage, which is internally lit, this would be, uh, more of a decorative, uh, you know, just gives a different flavor to the sign. I think it's actually part of the aesthetic treatment of the sign, instead of just having that kind of blank blue field, which is still nice, it would still be a good-looking sign, but I think this actually gives it some aesthetic interest, uh, by putting there, you have the, you know, obviously ocean's consistent with the township name, gives you a sense of place. Uh, so I think all of that, uh, makes a lot of sense, and from a planning perspective, uh, I think it's a good idea to do. Um, can I say it's absolutely necessary? Of course not, it's not absolutely necessary. Uh, but do I think it's an improvement, uh, and adds something to the sign? I, I definitely do. Uh, and then from a practical standpoint, I think there's certainly wayfinding, uh, benefits. Um, there's another little nuance in terms of where the sign is located. I'm not exactly sure why this is in the ordinance, but it is there. Uh, there's a requirement that the sign be located south of the driveway. Now, that's interesting because there's no requirement for exactly where the driveway is going to be. So the sign location can float under the ordinance because the driveway can float. But the ordinance does require it to be located on the south, um, side of the driveway. We are proposing it on the north side of the driveway, and there's two reasons for that. Uh, one, we wanted to have a little bit more separation from the pylon sign, which is over here, for the Wawa or for the, uh, gas convenience store, so putting it on the north side just gives a little more of a break as you go on down thirty-five. Uh, the other reason is that stormwater facility, I described to you earlier, that bioretention facility that's on top of the arches. Um, we've wanted to have our, uh, flow path not hindered by the sign, be able to put that full landscaping package around it without blocking off, off the downstream overflow from that basin. Uh, so the north side allows us to do that. Uh, could we make it work on the south side? Of course, I can engineer anything. Um, but do I think it's a better planning or design alternative? No, I think the north side makes, uh, more sense, uh, for the reasons I've gone through. Uh, actually, I wanted to stay on sign variances. So the other sign variance then has to do, and I don't have a slide for it because this was something identified, um, you know, just relatively recently, but has to do with the Wawa sign over on Deal Road. Uh, it's a similar kind of thing, it's a, a wayfinding sign. Eh, I think it, it's, it's good for the site because you get that, uh, kind of early lead, do I want to go in here i- in the first place or not? You know, is that gas price something I'm interested in? It helps, uh, drivers to be able to decide rather than, you know, maybe making a last minute, oh, all right, I'll go check it out. So I, I think there's some value from a wayfinding perspective. Uh, also, that sign, as I, uh, testified to earlier, is less intense as commercial signs go. It's just the channel, uh, letters that are lit, it's not the whole box, so, uh, much less, uh, you know, glare, et cetera, coming off it. So it's an appropriate transitional sign. Um, it's not that monument signs are not permitted along Deal Road, the residential signs are in fact, uh, much further to the east, we've got the residential sign there, so it's not out of character overall. Um, and it is in keeping with the, uh, shopping center sign that will, monument sign that we have right next to the jug handle ramp. So it's a nice transition, you go from the more, uh, internally illuminated box sign, then you go to the Wawa sign, which is somewhere in between, and then finally down to the residential sign on the east end. Uh, so I think it, uh, makes sense. Again, can I say it's absolutely necessary? Of course not.
Ms. Krimko?
Yeah.
Excuse me for interrupting, but, uh, is your witness going to be able to get through the rest of this in three minutes or so?
Probably not.
Probably not, right?
So it's clear that, uh, uh, the witness will have to be back next time?
He would have to anyway for questions, so.
Of course. Uh, so, uh, would it be a logical time to end at this?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chair, questions? Uh, Ms. Krimko?
Yes.
Do you have any other, uh, statements for the good of the order in terms of, uh, when your next?
Well, we had requested special hearings. And I understand that Ron has worked with the board and the board's professionals and that there are special hearing dates available, uh, for March fourth and March eleventh. And I understand that the high school is available, and it's a question I asked Ron at the beginning. The high school is being reserved in the event there was, uh, a public showing that would not fit in this room. I'll defer to the board as to whether or not to hold the next meeting here or at the high school.
The question would be of notice. Didn't you notice for the fourth and eleventh?
No, a- as a special hearing, I'm not required to do that notice.
The, I believe the M L U L indicates that, uh, it's up to the board, uh, to make a determination. Has to be forty-eight hours in advance. And, uh, but we have a lot of people here, I would suggest that, uh, it may be prudent.
Uh, agreed, a decision should be made tonight because what I would ask is that there's no question I would ask that this be carried to the, to a special meeting on March fourth without the need for additional notice. What I would also ask is the board make a decision tonight as to whether or not the meeting will be held here or in the high school, so there is no question as to notice, uh, the night of the fourth, because as you know.
I agree that that decision should be made tonight so that there's no concern by the public about where to go.
Correct.
So, uh, our administrator.
Uh, I would, i- if it's the board's choosing to have a meeting on the fourth, then I would elect to have it at the high school.
I would, I would tend to agree because I, well, there may not have, well, there may not have been people that would send us to the high school for tonight.
Right.
My concern is, is that if we schedule it for here and a larger crowd shows up, we won't have the ability to go forward because you can't move it to the high school that night.
Right.
So I would ask then, and, and obviously the applicant would pay for a special meeting and the costs associated with the high school, I would ask that we schedule this at the high school. I assume it's the auditorium that we talked about? In the high school auditorium on March fourth. I would ask that the board consider having it start earlier than seven-thirty.
Seven o'clock, it's, it is slated from.
So I'd ask that the board carry this till seven P M. on, uh, Monday, March fourth, at the high school auditorium. The high school address is what? Someone should know that, right? Well, I'd like to put it on the record.
Yeah, you should have the address put on the record. Oh, Ms. Krimko's looking for that. When we have, uh, regular monthly meetings like we did this evening, uh, we start at seven o'clock. Uh, but that's, uh, not to talk about, uh, particular applications. But in the context of a special meeting, uh, the board, uh, would, would not have that caucus meeting and would start at seven. And, uh, i- if the board grants that, a special meeting, it would be the only, uh, application on the docket. So, um, i- it could go on for an extended period of time that night. What's your vision, uh, for how long it would go, Ms. Krimko?
Well, eh, eh, the witnesses that I have, after we finish Jeremy, obviously he's going to be open for public questions and based on the public, based on the public questions that were asked on some of the simple applications. Uh, before this, I anticipate it would be lengthy. Um, after I have a, after I have a traffic engineer, I have an architect, uh, that will come forward, and then finally, I have a certified tree expert who will, uh, offer testimony with regard to the tree report that we did submit, but not in time, uh, within ten days of, uh, tonight, which is why I didn't even consider moving it in. Um, I don't know that we'd even get to that tree expert on March fourth based on who we have, so I anticipate it would be a, a somewhat lengthy hearing.
Okay.
So, and, and just to clarify, I'm sorry, Mr., Mr. Brown, just to clarify, the high school address is five fifty West Park Avenue.
And for the benefit of the audience, uh, for those of you who were here all evening, uh, for the first two applications, uh, you saw that the general procedure is that after a witness, uh, testifies, uh, then the members of the public have the opportunity to cross-examine that witness. So assuming that the board, uh, rules that we will continue on the fourth, then you can come loaded with your questions, and, uh, I'm sure our engineer will be ready. Uh, and, uh, and then if you have an overall question about when you can make comments, then, uh, after all the witnesses are, um, uh, introduced and have a chance to testify and are cross-examined, uh, then I understand from tonight that the objectors may have some experts. Uh, so, uh, then that will proceed. And then at the end of all that, um, the public will have the opportunity under oath to make comments. And Ms. Krimko knows that procedure and would affirm that's, that's the standard practice and that's what we will do to give, uh, folks a, a chance.
And just as a point of order, any, um, person, any member of the public who is represented by counsel cannot make comments during the public portion, they can only offer comments through a question, uh, through a, a, a questioning from their attorney. I just think that should be made clear as well, Mr. Brown.
In a special hearing as well?
I don't think we have to rule on that, uh, right now, uh, but, uh, take it under advisement. Uh, a- any other, uh, questions by the professionals over here? Comments? Mr. Chair, so do you want to have a official, uh, vote to, uh, conduct a special meeting on the fourth? Your motion?
So we should have a motion to conduct a special meeting on the fourth at, I believe, five fifty, uh, West Park Avenue in Ocean Township.
Seven P M.
Seven P M.
So moved.
Seconded.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Thank you.